Agents led by Board Member Jorgensen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to invite up Reverend Brad Hall from First Baptist Church of Palatka, who will deliver our invocation.
Let us pray. God, we come before you this afternoon, Lord, just thankful for this day and, Lord, for all the blessings you give us of living in a land of liberty where we could exercise our privilege to vote today. God, we thank you for that. And, Lord, as we gather in this place for this school board meeting, I'm mindful, Lord, that you brought my family here a year ago, and both of my children got to be a part of the Putnam County School District. I'm so thankful, God, for the way that my children were welcomed, the way, Lord, that they were loved and cared for by teachers and administrators, all the way up to the school board and the superintendent, and how they were welcomed in here and how they've been prepared, Lord, for all that you have planned for them ahead. And they're continuing to be prepared for that, and I'm so grateful for that. Continue, Lord, to give us a school district here, God, that we can know truly cares about our children and their future, and that, Lord, represents this community and the care and the concern that we all have from our churches and our businesses, Lord, every part of it. God, we pray that we would honor you in how we serve, Lord, here today. We pray, God, for just continue to teach wisdom within our classrooms and also within our boardrooms. We pray for protection for our schools and our children, for provision, Lord, for the resources needed to carry out the education. God, we pray for the homes and the families of our children. We know no matter how well our schools are prepared, if the home is not secure, Lord, it creates problems, God, and we know that we should love these kids, but, Lord, we also know you love them, and we pray that you provide homes and families for them that love them and care for them and provide what they need at home so that they can go to school and be educated and prepared. And, God, ultimately today, as we have this meeting, Lord, I already know that there's things about insurance and benefits and other factors that are in play today, and we pray, God, for these decisions. We know it's been difficult across our entire culture in these things right now, so, God, I pray for wisdom. I pray, Lord, that people would, we'd all work together to provide the best benefits we can for our teachers and our leaders, and I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation today from David Powell, who represents Florida Youth Tobacco Survey Results. Hi, David.
It's a pleasure to be here. It has been a while since I've had the opportunity to stand before you with some information. Before I get started, I want to make a couple of introductions. As you know, I'm going to be retiring next month, so I want to introduce the new program manager, Ms. Jenny Ramos-Gagne. She is on board with us now and working with me for the next month. Also, I have Nealon Patel with us, who is one of our senior SWAT members. She's in 11th grade out of QI Roberts and serves as our county chair. So, I'm here today to share some news with you. We got the results from the Florida Youth Tobacco Survey that was conducted last January and February into schools. We surveyed all of the high schools and all of the middle schools, and happy to say we got some really good results to share with you guys today. So initially, this was developed to monitor and evaluate the Florida Tobacco Prevention and Control Program administered annually since 1998. A state-level survey conducted in odd years tracks the following: indicators of tobacco use, emerging tobacco products, exposure of secondhand smoke, tobacco use prevention education, thoughts and attitudes toward tobacco. And prior results can be found at floridahealth.gov statistics. You can read the address there, and it's in your packet. Also, an easier way is fysonline.com. That is an interactive chart where you can go in and you can look at the results for all of the past years. So the purpose of the survey is to determine the prevalence of youth behaviors that are of interest to the state, track these behaviors across time, collect data that is comparable to national, state, and/or local data, and provide data amongst subpopulations of Florida's So in 2018, the aim was to develop estimates for the Florida Youth Tobacco Survey, the High School Florida Youth Substance Abuse Survey, and the Middle School Substance Abuse So in 2008, just shortly after I started working here, 21% of high school youth smoked cigarettes. 31% of high school youth in Putnam used any form of tobacco, and at that time, it did not include vape products, they were not counted. 14% used smokeless tobacco, and only 47% were committed never smokers. Let's fast forward to 2018. Now only 5% of our total youth smoked cigarettes. 34% of youth in Putnam County used any form of tobacco, but that includes the vapor products that we've come across lately. Only 5.4% used smokeless tobacco, and 79.1% are committed never smokers now. So let's break it down a little bit by category. So this is a chart of the data results from 2012, 2014, 2016, and 2018, with the change percent between 2016 and 18 and the trends. You have this in your packet as well. So I broke it down into some charts for you guys. So ever tried cigarettes? If you look at the trend from 2012, it was kind of static. It was like 24.3% in 2012, 24.7 in 2014, 24.2% in 2016, and in 2018, it dropped to 18.9%, a 21% reduction. Ever tried vapor products? This one, you see the really steep climb up until 2016. It started out at 5.6% in 2012, rose to 14.7 in 2014, 25.9 in 2016, and I'm happy to say that we actually saw a reduction this year to 23.5%, which is a 9.26% reduction. We're one of the only counties that saw reductions in the state. Our surrounding counties have much higher rates.
That's interesting.
So this is actually currently using tobacco products. So in 2012, it was 6.2% currently use cigarettes. In 2014, it was 9%. In '16, it was 7.2%, and in 2018, it was 5.1%. That's 29.16% reduction over the past two years. Cigars have been of interest in this county. Cigars are very inexpensive in the youth, have easy access to them. So currently used cigars in 2012 was 5.5%. In 2014, it was 7.1%, and it's dropped to 5.5 in 2016, and then down to 5.2% in 2018. That's a 5.45% reduction. Smokeless tobacco is also a major issue because of the rural nature of our county. So smokeless tobacco rates in 2012 were 6%. They went up to 6.9% in 2014. In 2016, it went down to 5.3%, and they saw a slight increase this year to 5.4%. It's a 1.86% increase. The only category we saw any kind of an increase in, and it's really marginal, it's Hook is one of those things that, to me, is a fad. They're big into college towns, but in this town, they really haven't seemed to have taken hold. So currently used hooka started out at 1.7% in 2012. It jumped to 4.4% in 2014. In 2016, it jumped to 4.8, and then in 2018, it dropped to 4.10, so I think it's kind of fading a little bit.
What is it?
A hooka is like a water pipe. It uses a form of tobacco called shisha, and it's like a water pipe. It's got four tubes come out of it, or at least more than one. It's used in a group setting. Over in Gainesville, they have hooka bars, the restaurants that kids can go in and they can share a hooka. They actually put tobacco...
You remember the Cheshire Cat in...
In Alice in Wonderland.
Wonderland, I think, was smoking a...
He was smoking a hooka, yeah.
Yeah. Smoking something there.
It's from the Middle East.
Again, I think this was just kind of a fad. We're seeing downward trends in it as well, so hopefully that continues. Electronic vaping, this has been the bane of all of us. Fortunately, we have seen it kind of plateau for the last two years instead of going up, which it's done in most counties. But it started out at 1.9% in 2012, virtually unknown. It jumped to 5.9% in 2014, then to 12.3% in 2016, and it has remained at 12.3%. The surrounding counties are all much higher than that. I don't have the numbers on me right now, but they're all significantly higher, and I think some of that has to do with affluence. We're seeing some of the biggest issues out at QI Roberts for the Juul devices, and they're kind of pricey, so kids can't really afford those, so that may be, affluence may be a factor with that in these counties.
They can be hidden pretty easy, too, right?
The Juul device is very small. They're only about this long. They look like a USB jump drive. They plug into the computer to charge, and they have a little pod that plugs into them that has the e-liquid in it. And those pods contain as much nicotine as a full pack of cigarettes.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, they're very, very potent, and kids are getting addicted with these things very, very quickly.
Wow. I've been on a rock. None of this.
So what are some of the factors we've had for success? We've had some really strong support from partners for tobacco-free policies, the school district, of course, first ones to do it here in 2011. We've had emerging products like Juul included, smoke-free policies at our county fair, the county parks, St. John's River State College, and many major employers, including BEC, North Florida Community Medical Center, Solaris Healthcare, St. John's River Water Management District, and Georgia Pacific are all tobacco-free grounds and companies. So we've had a lot of progress as far as the impact of tobacco. Back in 2011, this is the group of kids I brought with me to present to the school board on the benefits of a tobacco-free campus. It was really kind of an interesting thing because it was actually an agenda item before the presentation. It got voted and approved before the kids actually did their presentation. But when they left out, they were so enthusiastic and so boisterous, I had to rush them out of the building because they were going to disrupt the meeting. But they were very, very enthusiastic about that. They were all jumping up and down, high-fiving, and it was a great accomplishment for them. Many of these kids I've kept in touch with, Kareem is still out in Tallahassee, and as he prepares to enter law school and has been dabbling in politics a little bit. Abria Campbell is also out in Tallahassee finishing her studies. Savannah Ross is still in town here. Some of the other ones I've lost touch with, Wayne Walker is, last I heard from him, he was looking to become a state trooper.
Wow. Can I interrupt for just a moment, please?
Sure.
I served a term on the school board from '94 to '98, and I believe that this gentleman here was a high school student and actually started or...
Charlie was one of the first SWAT members in the state, yes.
So young lady that represents SWAT, he used to sit down there when he was in high school in Blackout.
She may be sitting up here.
All right, yeah. Speak things that...
You never know.
He was smoking so bad, and we made him be in charge of it.
I just wanted to let you know that.
It's amazing because SWAT is celebrating its 20th anniversary this year, and we've got some information in your packets that detail some of that information, some of the successes we had and some of the programs that we're offering. So we're really pleased with what we've done so far. So what are some of the next steps that we need to do? We need to continue pushing policies that encourage companies to become tobacco-free grounds. We need to look at the retail environment, which is where kids are exposed to every day. If you walk into any convenience store, you see the power wall, and these kids are constantly inundated with the marketing in these convenience stores, so we need to find ways to restrict that. One of the things that I would like to see happen at some point in time is to raise the age to purchase tobacco to 21. Also, we need to educate our community partners, including our teachers. We have a great program available for teachers. It's the online tobacco training that is offered by Palm Beach County School District. They offer 30 or 60 credits for recertification for taking this course. It's free. I've talked to some teachers who have taken it. It's amazing from what I've heard. It's very comprehensive. They actually have to work it into their lesson plan, and they have to submit that lesson plan for review. So this is one way to start with. Also, working with our other community partners to just engage them in the tobacco conversation. So from here on out, it's going to be Ms. Jennifer's program. I'm looking forward to seeing the great things that she does, and I am just honored to have been a part of being here in Putnam County for the last 11 and a half years.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you all for the opportunities that you've given me, the support that you've given me, and hope that that will continue.
Please enjoy your retirement.
I will. Before I go, my boss, Mary Garcia, would like to say a couple things.
Hi, Mary.
I just wanted a few things just to kind of wrap up. One, to celebrate David. We're going to incredibly miss him. We've had a wonderful opportunity to be, David and I actually worked side by side. We just didn't know it when I was in St. John's County, so that's how far back we go back together when his kids were in SWAT. So it's kind of a full journey, and I'm sure he's not going to be that far away from tobacco and helping the community, so he will help in. He will help us along the way. But I also wanted, one, to talk to you a little bit about our flu pod that we did, because it was an incredible partnership with the school district. We want to thank you. It was something that most everybody thought was not going to be able to be done. We actually did three drive-through vaccinations, PODs, so we call it a POD, a point of dispensing, three in each of the high schools, so Crescent City, Interlock, and Palatka. We did over 350 vaccinations in one day, which is usually uncalled. It's amazing. But the most important part is that usually something like this takes about six months to plan, and we did it in three weeks. So I want to thank you and your team, who are incredible. We asked for help. They came out and helped. Some of us fussed a little bit, like, what's Mary doing now again? She's nuts, but the community came together. We came together with paramedics, our firefighters, the school district setting stuff up, bringing stuff, helping out students, your explorer groups that came out in Palatka. I mean, just have to say, it was just an incredible success story. We also did another POD in one of your schools that had some illnesses, so we took care of that, and we're wanting to make sure that we let people know that for various reasons, we're not going to be doing the vaccinations in the school. So we'll hope to have another POD again at the hospital, so if you'll share that information, it's really important for individuals. We did one at the hospital this weekend with the community baby shower, and again, had over 100 vaccines, so that's just amazing. I just think it's an incredible accomplishment that we've done. And then wanted to, I wanted to see if Mr. Weaver was here, but...
He's right behind you.
Were you hiding from? He hides from me. He knows that Mary's got work. Well, I wanted to talk a little bit, we were so pleased that through our coalition, through the North Central Healthcare Coalition, we were able to provide Stop the Bleed kits that have been distributed now to every one of your schools, and training has also been done to every one of your schools, and I want to thank you for your help in putting that together. So hopefully, he doesn't know that quite yet. Don't let him know so he can't escape, but we'll try to do it, maybe if we can, to do the training. It's really important with maybe your seniors, maybe hands-only CPR, and then Stop the Bleed, very important trainings.
Stop the Bleed.
Yes.
Explain that to me.
Well, when I was young, I had somebody that actually mistakenly cut one of their arteries, and I was able to take, because surprisingly enough, you can actually be able to save someone's life if you respond really quickly. Most people at the sight of blood gag, but if you can take any kind of, and he's got the kit there, if you can take elastic, if you have a pencil, these are actually kits that are made up so that there's no expiration date on them. They will live along with your AED devices. We hopefully that your coaches will also take it, because you never know what might happen.
Well, I'm glad you don't have arterial bleeding, because Travis is real slow at getting his...
Yeah, we're going to be dead by the time we're doing this. But anyway, it cuts the bleeding off. It actually is able to save lives. So, literally, and this is the instructions, really simple. Pressure, if it's not stopping the pressure, and then this is really, you have to apply the dressing, you can close the wound, but it really is very simple. Anybody can learn to do this. It's all contained in this kit. There are 131 that were handed out across your schools. I mean, I was just so pleased to be able to do it. They don't have an expiration date on them, so they'll be good forever. And then the actual tourniquets that are inside are reusable, so it's just amazing, and anybody, anybody can administer. It takes very little, being able to turn that tourniquet, to be able to save lives. So I'm just really excited that we were able to bring this to Putnam in light of all some of the other exciting things that you all have shared this year, so we don't want that to happen, so this at least will help us beat that as well.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay. And hopefully, I'm going to try to get some for your buses, too.
Mary, thanks so much for the collaboration that the Health Department has always had with Putnam County School District. There are a lot of things we couldn't do as well as we do without your help.
You know, it's, people, I think that's one of the most fun things I say about Putnam County, is that when we are in need, we come together. Other places can't really say that. And certainly for this flu vaccination POD, we asked, sometimes a little more, you know, sometimes they looked at you like, no, I don't get it. So it didn't matter. They didn't get it, they came out and helped, and that was the incredible part. I think the schools were highly recognizable. Thank you for putting it in all your marquees. I mean, really, in three weeks, we did something that probably no one else has ever even attempted, so it wouldn't have happened without all your help. And then I do want to put a kudos in for Crescent City. We did 115 vaccinations in Crescent City, and I would say 50% of them are due to somebody who's hiding in the back row. So Lucy is amazing. She convinced individuals about the importance of the flu shot, to have the shot, and I have to tell you, it brings me to tears. One of our nurses from the hospital, she says, you know, one of the things that this did for me was opened my eyes to the needs in our county that I'm not aware of. She said, a mother came with her child, walked four miles, because she doesn't have, it was a school day off, so they didn't have transportation. She walked four miles to make sure her child had this vaccination. So honestly, that should wake us up, that there is just incredible need, and that being able to work together. If we'd had it here in Palatka, they would never have been able to come do it. If we had it at the Health Department, they would not have been able to come. So being able to be proactive and doing it in each of our areas enabled this individual to be able to come. So I think it opened the eyes of each of our partners as well to the needs in our area. So I think it was just an incredible event, and I'm sure we'll do it again, so, you know, don't get tired.
And I think it was important, too, to get out the information that you do not get the flu if you take the flu shot. It's amazing to me how many adults still believe that.
Have a new grasp, yes, yeah. I have to say, one of, Bill Pickens, I was laughing, who said his mother had been trying to get him to have a flu shot for 40 years, and he finally got his first one. So I don't know, I don't think you had to hold him down, did you? But we did.
Could I get a picture with Dave and Mary?
Yes, absolutely.
Out here?
And you get that.
And thank you for all the time, especially David, you put in to the tobacco campaign. Daniel, you want to come back?
No, I was going to step out here.
Oh, sorry.
Anyway, thanks for all the time you put in and all the lives you saved.
Really.
To the tobacco campaign.
Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you.
I always look at these results with my report card, and I felt like this was probably the best thing that could have happened going out.
It's great data, and those are lives, too, so.
Absolutely.
And David, again, thank you so much. We had an opportunity to reminisce at the riverfront.
Yes, we did.
All the years we spent together, and you, I guess you know it, but you've touched the lives of many children. You pointed out some of them there, and I believe because of this program and the roles that you allowed them to participate in, pushed them to the forefront of becoming leaders, and it is a blessing to have someone like you, and I'm sure that this young lady is going to take up the torch and follow in your steps.
And I have to say, Charlie will agree, it's always been a youth-led movement.
Yes.
And that's the key to the successes of the program.
Yes.
Is making sure that it's youth-led. Jenny and I were at the regional meeting this weekend, and it was entirely led by you. The adults didn't get up on the stage.
Wow, awesome, awesome.
Well, Ms. Patel was actually at Jenkins when I was there, and she started showing a lot of leadership ability at that time, so congratulations.
There is a book that has a verse that states, "And a child shall leave them," and truly, you know, I see it coming to the forefront, starting with the Charlies and all the others. And so, again, we do appreciate what you've done.
Okay, our next presentation, Superintendent and I would like to ask Ms. Jorgensen to come up to the podium, please.
Yes, you have to.
You go ahead and take that out. Oh, it's heavy. Don't drop it on your foot.
Hit Morris with this.
Yeah. I want to say a few words before we present this. It's my honor and privilege to recognize Kathy Jorgensen for her many years of service to the Putnam County School District, and this is her final meeting on the school board. And she actually started on the school board in 1994, and that's the same year I became an administrator, so how about that? And served a term and took off three terms, and then came back and served two additional terms. So she's put quite a number of years in serving our children, and I'll tell you a couple things about Kathy. We didn't always see eye to eye, but I'll tell you one thing, there was no one more passionate about education and about kids. I mean, even right before the meeting, she was advocating for kids with me, so, yeah, in private, but anyway. But Kathy, we appreciate all the time Kathy's put in, and our kids will have certainly benefited from her time on the board, and we will certainly miss you. And we just have a small token of our appreciation. Don't drop it, because it will hurt. It says, "In appreciation of your service, Kathy Jorgensen, Putnam County School Board member, November 2018."
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, you want to pose out here? Can you pose out here?
Look at, so you got to stand in over.
Can we have, y'all mind joining? David, Sadie?
Come on, board.
Kathy, Mike.
Come on down here, Charles. Yeah, come on down. Last time we helped all of y'all together. Is that good?
Yes. One, two, three. Awesome.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
She'll have some words later on. She's going to write you the board reports.
I'll do it. Go ahead. I'll take a minute now. It has been a privilege and an honor and a roller coaster ride for the 12 years, but I've loved just about every minute of it. I've worked with five different superintendents, and I've served on seven different board makeups. No two boards the same, no two superintendents the same either, of course, and it's been a wonderful ride. I'm taking my retirement very happily and see what God has in store for me next, but thank you very much. I appreciate it very much.
Pass it down. Pass it down. That is a heavy joke. Goodness. Thank you. Okay, it's public comment time. I've only received one public comment card. If there was anyone else in the audience who wanted to make public comment, now's the time. You need to fill this out and give it to Ms. Cormaney. But the one I do have is from Holly Pickens.
Hi, I'm Holly Pickens, 107 Driftwood Lane, Georgetown, Florida. And yesterday, I got an email from Ms. Cormaney, and it had the insurance rates on it. And I looked at it and tried to digest it, and it's very scary, and I have to ask myself, is this the best we can do for our employees? I was at the insurance meeting, and it was an extremely compelling presentation about not going out for bid, extremely compelling. I left thinking in my heart that we shouldn't go out for bid, but the more I digested it, the more I thought, there's a reason... But the more I digested it, the more I thought, there's a reason why United doesn't want to go out to bid. There's a reason why maybe we are not that big of a risk. Obviously, you're not gonna fight for something that you're losing money at. So the more I thought about it, I just said, is this the best we can do for our employees? I think back when I was a younger teacher, and I, my husband wasn't insurable. He had been misdiagnosed, and so I had the insurance for our family. And $2,200? I couldn't have done that and paid my mortgage. To me, insurance is a benefit. And what we're doing with this is we talk about teacher retention, but what we're doing when insurance is this expensive, teachers are gonna leave. And I also feel like the meeting where the vote was occurred, there was an extremely large presentation, very time-consuming, very worthwhile, about migrant education. It took probably 45 minutes for that. And I think that we lost some people that had public comment that were very, very, they had the right and they just, the meeting just lasted too long and they had to leave. But they, they had good presentations, too. And I want to know, it just, it really concerns me, and my heart is for the teachers. You know, I was one. And when you have, teachers weren't notified. I remember, you know, three years ago, I felt horrible, and shame on me, I didn't do my education. I didn't look in, and I depended on someone else to make decisions for the insurance. But I was mad because I wasn't really given a voice. I didn't take the opportunity to use my voice. That's my fault. I'll take that. A lot of our teachers were completely unaware of what was going on with our insurance. And that's, I don't know whose fault that is. I don't know. But I just wanted to make my belief that we should have heard from those, the public comments, and we really, really, really have to ask ourselves, is this the best that we can do for our employees? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Shouldn't I ask if anybody wants to pull anything? David's not gonna allow that.
Before they, before they get a second, they can say, I'd like to pull.
But I usually do it this way.
Okay, that's fine.
Ms. Jorgensen, is there anything you'd like to pull?
No, thank you.
Mr. Buckles. Ms. Gillioli.
David, take care.
Well, I have one question, and it's just a question, so I'm not really gonna pull it. I just, is Laura here?
Yes.
Okay. About how many teachers will get the reading endorsement?
It depends. I think we only paid out like maybe six last year.
Oh, okay, okay, no problem.
And it's paid through Title II.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Buckles, you may now make your motion.
I might defer to someone else, but.
That's fine.
Somebody else can make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, there are no emergency items, which is wonderful, and no unfinished business. So that moves us into discussion, input, and action on insurance committee recommendation for the 2019 insurance plan. And the superintendent would like to make a statement.
On mine, for some reason, I have something on the emergency. It might have just been.
That was not, it was removed, I think.
Removed, Mary?
There was gonna be something that was taken off.
Okay, all right. You had me thinking I was losing it. So it was there, but removed.
Right. It was settled. Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may read a brief statement, just some information I want to share with you. Board members, before you make a decision to approve the insurance committee's recommendation of the 2019 United Healthcare Insurance Renewal Options, there are some important items to consider. I would like to remind the board that I was in support of the half of the insurance committee members that recommended we send our insurance plan out for bid. That did not happen, and now we were faced with drastically increased insurance costs for all of our employees that choose to take part in our insurance coverage. Keeping in mind that all of our employees, past and present, are taking a financial hit with the new insurance rates, I find it disheartening for the retired members of our Putnam County School District family to take an additional hit. Our retirees have decided, I'm sorry, have dedicated years to serving our district students and families, and continue the $100 per month subsidy for retirees on plans C, D, and E would be inhumane. I would like for the board to be aware that item seven on your handout about insurance, to consider going to all HSA plans in 2020 would adversely affect over half of our current employees who choose to participate in our health insurance under Plan C. In the future, if we plan to remove our PPO plan, commonly known as our copay plan, we should solicit input from the individuals that would be affected if this plan were removed. Please take into account the impact on the families that we will be, that will be affected by these changes in insurance costs. I would ask the board, when contemplating approval of the insurance committee's recommendation, to give careful consideration to items number six and seven, which I've just reviewed with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are y'all, do you see the?
Yes, yes, it's on the front two pages of our handout.
Right.
Well, I did not get this until late last night. None of our teachers have seen this, to my knowledge. A few employees at the district have seen it. My phone has blown up since I left the college and got down here for the meeting. I have acquaintances that are teachers that are not gonna be able to pay these rates. They're just not. They're not gonna be able to be insured. I have friends whose insurance payment will be more than their mortgage payments. I have friends that will be working just to pay their insurance. There's, there's nothing about this that is palatable to me. And I'm one of them on Plan C who's gonna go up drastically. I agree with the superintendent about six and seven. I absolutely will not vote for that recommendation. And as you well know, I was also in favor of going out to bid to see if we could do better than this, and I just can't believe that we couldn't. And that's just what I want to say. Everybody else has their. I want to say that it's all been very political, and I'm gonna be very glad to be out of it. But as far as I'm concerned, this insurance thing has been politics. Well, just as much for you. Right. For me as it has been for you. It's been politics. Well, no, what it has been to me is wanting to get the best possible rates for our teachers, and it has nothing else to do with anything else. I could care less about politics. You don't understand the cause. I understand just as much as you do. What were you gonna say? You can laugh all you want to.
I said, let me know what I was gonna say.
Yeah, I do.
It's the numbers, dollars and cents.
Dollars and cents.
And it's just like Holly stood here and said, they can't afford it.
They cannot afford it.
You have to make a choice wherein I am insured, even though I want to be insured, and my mortgage or medical, it's not fair to the, to the constituents.
It absolutely is not fair.
That's who we have.
Have, has anybody researched whether other districts' teachers pay?
I've looked at it before we voted the last time.
No, I mean now, because we've gone up.
I mean, before our last meeting.
Oh, before the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And there are many that aren't as high, there are some that are higher in the bigger districts.
Madam Chair, just, Rhonda cannot be here today, but if you have any questions at all that our staff can answer. Shannon is here.
I just want to say one more thing, David, before you. And I don't even know if this is a possibility, but I don't think we should vote on this until we have a full board, until our new board is seated and we have a full board.
I spoke to Shannon prior to the meeting, but when you're through, I'll.
I'm through, I'm done.
I was, I was looking at this, and with, last year when we dealt with this same stuff, we said, you know, we're not, you know, come to us with your best offer. And because of the dynamics in the insurance committee, United Healthcare was hamstrung in their ability to give, you know, to work and sharpen the pencil and work and not be able to give us the, they maybe reveal their cards. I, I've been going through this.
Been revealed now.
Well, I've been, well, they've, they've worked in with the committee, and I understand, and I'm Plan C, just like you and my entire family. There are several things that I'm interested in asking the superintendent about, maybe and the board attorney to look into. I'd like to just see if there's, we hear about this retiree problem, and, but this is something that's already been given and we don't, it's not usually when you set precedent, and I was probably the superintendent when we started doing that, or it could have been done prior to my tenure. But we've discussed before with steps and things, maybe at some point, looking at an alternative schedule for prospective retirees in the future at some date certain. And I would like to, number one, ask the superintendent to maybe look, get with finance. I talked to Shannon prior to the meeting, and certainly Rhonda would be no stranger to this, because we have talked about it with, with employees who had, years ago, who got the step increases, having an alternative set and scale. But we never went that route. And I know it's extremely expensive to pick up the retirees and then their, and what goes with that. The second thing is that I think, you know, when I said we hamstrung United Healthcare's ability to, to really sit down with Mr. Page and the committee and try to come up with more attractive reductions than they did last year, it kind of, kind of tied our hands and tied their hands in a manner that I would like to not only look at seeing if the superintendent could have the insurance committee meet again and try to find some way that Mr. Douglas can, can advise that would help the committee and Mr. Page and United Healthcare, see if there's anything else that can be done, and then have an emergency meeting next week. And let's, and let's see if we can find some way to, to, I'm kind of like Jane. Sure, I'd like to see a full board here, but we don't have a full board, and.
We will at our next meeting.
Well, I don't know that time is of the essence, and this may take time.
You can change the time.
My next, hold on, the next question is, if we do something in this board vote that we've already taken, that's kind of like, this is it, we're gonna, we're gonna go with it, is, is not what we, we thought it was going to be, that maybe there was a way to negotiate also a cancellation notice? Mr. Douglas said, just something you could look at? I've never seen that before, don't know if it's legal, but that's why you're the attorney.
Like a 30-day?
Yeah, a 30-day cancellation notice. Now, you may have already looked at that, but I don't know that any of this will, will, I guess the bottom line is, I think we treated United Healthcare poorly in, in trying to say early on and hamstring them on the time to go out to bid, where they couldn't reveal their cards. And just wanted to try one more time before this board votes to commit additional funding, if that be the choice of the majority of the board, and maybe next week have an emergency meeting and resolve this.
And I'm in favor of if they're going back to the board and, and come up with something that's palatable, that's affordable.
But it seems like to me, you know, so they reduce the premiums, but then the deductible goes even higher, and the out-of-pocket goes even higher. They're just, they're getting slammed regardless of how, what, what you call it, what you paint it, what you name it.
Well, I'm not United Healthcare.
Well, I know I'm not either, but that's what happens. I mean, you can look at it here and see.
Well, that was just something I was interested in.
Yeah, I'm all for that.
Is that something you could research and come back?
I'm all for that.
And the reason, the three of us are here, we're, well, we're kind of on standby, just in case there are any questions, and also to get some clarification of exactly what you're asking for. Sharon, how long would it take if we public noticed another insurance committee meeting today? What was, what would be the earliest we could?
Forty-eight hours for insurance committee meeting.
Two days.
Forty-eight hours for special.
So I guess the insurance committee could possibly reconvene Friday, and then we could have another emergency board meeting. And I could let maybe Danny speak to what possibly could be done through United Healthcare, and I know one of their reps is here as well, in terms of what you may be seeing, a preview, so to speak. I personally don't think that miracles will happen in the next couple of days. The rates kind of are what they are. You can water down the plans a little bit more to maybe get a point or two reduction, but that's just my thoughts. I'll let anyone else who has anything to say.
It's worth a shot, I just.
Well, so y'all know, as a show of good faith, once the bid came off the table, the potential going to bid and coming from bid and going to bid, there was a couple of additional points given to us from United Healthcare that were blended into those final numbers that you've got, and that is it. That's, that's with the loss ratio that we have and the potential ongoing claims and the, the 27 people that have over $50,000 in claims and the five that have over $2 million in claims.
It's our fault.
It's the claims. I mean, that's what we're dealing with.
It's our fault. And that's the reason people have insurance.
Right, it's for the, I mean, so we, but, but insurance is to pay claims, and it's paying claims right now. So if we, if we stall this any longer, we start open enrollment on the 14th of November, and it takes us a month to do open enrollment. Between the 14th and today, if y'all approve this, we have to load everything into the system. We have to test the system to make sure that the rates and the people that did or did not complete their wellness screenings, those rates are in there, because those rates changed for the couple hundred people that didn't do their wellness checks. They have to be tested before we go out and start doing open enrollment with a laptop in front of the employees. So we're, we're in a bad situation, but we've been in a bad situation. We've, we've been trying to deal with a bad situation for several years.
No, you have.
And we have, we've exhausted all avenues as of right now, and I know the insurance committee can speak about, as many times as we met and went back and forth with changing deductibles or copays or prescription drug cards or whatever else we could do to change the plans and make things better.
Danny, can I ask you this? In the proposal, I think the open enrollment that you have there is like November 15th through December 7th. If that were backed up, and I know you have to get ready for January 1st, but how late in December, because we're, we don't get out till December 21st, how late in December could we back up the whole window?
Open enrollment window. That's where Tammy's gonna have a heart attack. So what happens, the further we back it up, the, so it's, it's open through the 7th for us to be out at schools, and then for another week for people to finish online enrollments. And then when those all come in and tally through the system, then they go to United Healthcare digitally. And any changes that have to be made, and we have to kind of clear files and make sure everything goes through so that the payroll deductions can be made correctly.
Could Tammy speak to that?
It takes getting the cards and everything from United Health, that's one of our problems, too, is updating their system. Because if we don't update their system by like the 15th of December, come January 1, people are not gonna have health insurance. So that is our main problem, is getting our files with the vision and the dental, all of those updated.
So Tammy, how late in December, I know it's December 7th, how late could we go conceivably?
I would not say we could go past the 15th, because our file.
And that right now is what we've got.
That's, we've got the deadline for the 7th, but you always have stragglers. So that next week is our cleanup week, so we could get that file to United Health.
So for the board's clarification, we could back, if you so choose, back it up after you, after you try to get some more clarity, till, I know you wanted to meet possibly next week for a special board meeting. If we back the window up, a.
If we back the window up a week, start open enrollment.
Y'all enough to.
Instead of, instead of the 15th, maybe the.
But what would you like us to accomplish in a week, in the next week with, with the insurance committee?
Yes. Well, Danny, and I'm, I've been, I'm still a proponent of, of trying to see if we can work with this avail program to get where I heard we were going last year. My concern is that, is that I feel like you were, or United Healthcare was hamstrung, and, and that was part of the process, and there's, there's gotta be a few, a point or two that it can be whittled on. I, I just, that's my problem and.
And that's what I was saying in my first statement, is there was. So after the going out to bid was pulled off, there were a couple of points, almost three, that were blended into those final rates when we, when we finalized everything.
So what you're saying, Danny, is nothing else can be done.
There's absolutely nothing else we can do. And just so y'all know, if we had, if you had voted to go to bid when we were mentioning that before, then we would back up everything we're doing right now by 30 days. So we are, we are literally at a point where we've got to get out to 22 locations and start talking to folks and explaining to them why we are where we are and what situation we're in. And I completely understand Holly's point and would love to sit down and talk with you about all that the insurance committee and I have gone through for months on end, trying to figure out a way to turn this ship. And we're turning it, but it's a slow-turning, slow-moving ship. It's nothing that we can push a button and fix. It's gonna take time.
Paul's behind you. We may call you back up for additional questions, Danny.
Well, I think what Mr. Buckles is wanting to do, I don't think we can get there from here. I think, you know, we're there, like it or not, and time has, has not been, is not our friend. And it wasn't our friend when we were talking about going out to bid a couple of weeks ago. We left it, the insurance committee, it was 4-4, left it for y'all to decide, y'all decided what you decided, and now here we are. I will say one thing, and I appreciate Ms. Pickens responding like she did, and the biggest, the biggest problem, the biggest issue that we have is the board contribution, because we have, the, the problem is that the, the rates are what they are, and the board contribution is one leg of the stool. And people that can't afford it, like Ms. Crawford said, people are not going to be able to, they're probably pretty well. That leaves the sick people on it. That means we have more sick people than we do well people, and that's, we, we start the downward spiral. That's what's commonly referred to as a death spiral. And I really believe, and I said that in an insurance committee meeting, that we are in, we are in that. We are in the death spiral. And unless something is done as far as contribution, we're gonna continue, I don't know where we'll be in three or four years.
I agree.
Probably without insurance.
I agree with you.
And I mean, we can talk about bidding, and, and you know, I was really torn about bidding. I think that for the factors being what they are, who they are, I think there might be some issues that's gonna take a longer amount of time than it would have to go out to bid back in a couple of weeks ago when y'all were talking about it. I feel that, I mean, this is Paul Smith talking, not insurance committee. I feel that we're going to have to go out to bid and do it in a very, you know, middle of the month, a middle of the month, middle of the year to get all the ducks in a row that we, we get everything done. I feel like we'll have to do that next year. But right now, we're just gonna have to, I mean, in my opinion, I think we're gonna have to just go with it. Sad that I am here, sad.
Am I correct when I say that, and Danny, I think you told me this, that they can't even give us a rate until they see our, what, what's gone on medically with us till whatever month it is, and I don't know what that month is, but that insurance companies can't bid until so many months have gone by?
Most of them will not without seeing all of your claims and all of your high-cost claims. And if we, if we pull the, the renewal too early, then they have to project trend through the rest of the year. And they look back and then they project it forward, which we don't have a really good track record of. So we try to get as many good months, if there are good months, coming on the books before we decide whether we're going to bid or not. And initially, all, all indicators were we were not going to bid, so we kept moving forward with United Healthcare. And then all of a sudden, there were indicators that we wanted to go to bid, but we had kind of gone down the road too far. Not kind of, we had gone down the road too far. So by all means, we can look at doing that next year, but let's hope that we get folks a little healthier between now and then, because that's what's working against us, is the health of the.
Madam Chair, can I ask Mr. Douglas a question that, out of that Mr. Buckles brought up about the 30-day cancellation?
Certainly.
Is that something that should be voted on before we vote on this, the rate plans, or at what point should that be entertained by the board?
Yes, I, I think it should be something that I, Mr. Buckles asked me about that minutes before the board meeting started today, so I would like an opportunity to try to study that before I could advise the board.
Well, with that in mind, should, should we, at least for that purpose, delay and call a special meeting later to give you time to research that before we approve these plans?
If that would be, or could be, an element that board members would want to include in or as a condition of approval, then yes. But if that's.
I don't understand the legality of it, Rick, but my, my concern is that if because of the increases, we have a pile of people walk away, we're gonna be in a pickle, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't know enough about insurance to, other than from what standpoint that you're looking at it, over the years, I had people do it for me, and, you know, it was a lot easier than getting in here and, and trying to pick out the best route to go. Do I think that we're on a good course to try to get healthier and do the things? Yes, but the money is still a little steeper than I thought it was, would be. That doesn't mean that I'm changed, but I would like to know if some of these things can be, can just be addressed and we can meet again pretty quick.
And Madam Chair, let me ask the board, I mean, if we, if you wanted to back the meeting up, I mean, back up the window, I think I heard him say you could do it for a week. Would you like the insurance committee to convene and again, have the United Healthcare come and again, offer any possibilities?
But Danny just said, there's nothing else.
I, I heard that too. I'm just asking, do you want them to meet and at least ask questions?
No, I mean, I, I would consider, I mean, because I believe Danny, there's nothing else he can, he's gonna do or can do, unfortunately. But I would like to find out what Charlie, in his research, finds out about the, the cancellation deal, just to have, you know, to, as a safety net. So for that matter, I would.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just one of you guys, but I, I still think it's worth trying. If it doesn't work, then.
Could you clarify, because I don't know what you're talking about.
To let the committee try one more time, United Healthcare, I, I know how Danny feels, but once, once he gets them in a meeting, they may say, listen, we can do something.
Well, I know last year, we had a similar situation and, you know.
They got their pencil sharpened.
We, we talked about going to bid, and then United Healthcare came back, and I know, came off about 10 percentage points on.
It was a different year.
I'm just saying, if there's any possibility, they can do that for our employees, because right now, we cannot attract teachers to this county with these kind of rates.
More pays more.
And some of the people that were gonna speak, that Holly was referring to last time before we voted, were teachers who left this county because they could not afford our insurance and went to St. John's County or surrounding counties.
Well, one of the things I did ask Mrs. Odom when, when, and Mr. Smith referenced it, was if the board would contribute more, and that would be great. I did ask her, and that increase would come out of our general fund, is what I'm thinking. She told me.
No.
It's the group insurance.
Oh, the group insurance. And she said, after X number of years, that would be depleted. I wish she was, well.
Well, she, Shannon's here to answer questions, because Ms. Odom briefed her on it.
Yeah, okay, because if you would come.
Shannon, can you come up and answer some of those questions?
Speak on that, because I don't want it to appear to someone that's watching or listening to this board meeting, is that you have a group of board members up here that don't care about the employees and don't want to contribute to their insurance. That is not the case. And that needs to be, you know, known.
But we won't.
So number one on the recommendations is to provide the $500 per year subsidy. So that $500 per year is costing the school district $547,500. The group insurance fund can sustain it, but it just would need to be reevaluated every year. So employees from, or employees who do not have our health insurance, who are paid from the general fund, there is money that goes into the group insurance fund that keeps building our balance. But like I said, each year, we would have to make sure that it can be sustained.
Do you know what Fand what our balance is now?
I do not.
In the insurance fund?
Yes.
Two-point-five million.
I really, I really, if we're, if we're gonna send the committee back to look until next week, I really think it's premature to look at the board contribution. I'd like to at least see, and if they can't, they can't, and then we've got to vote, vote on it then. But it's, it is, it's simple, you know? Can you or can't you?
He said no.
Huh?
He said no.
Well, he, he's saying no, but I mean, once United Healthcare sits down with him, I know he represents us, that they might find some room. I just think it's worth a try.
Because if they find some wiggle room.
You know, I.
And then we do our board.
You know, I.
Do a little something more.
I've been so.
It will be affordable, because if we are losing teachers because of this insurance and not losing some, some may desire to stay, but not have the insurance.
Madam Chair, Mr. Helms is also on the committee.
Yeah. Mr. Helms?
Brian, Brian, just a minute before we say something else. Well, I have, I have, please stay up here. I have been conflicted enough about this over the last year that I have talked to the board attorney about, is it even appropriate for me to, to vote on insurance since we get a contribution as a retiree? And he has, he has, he has said that it's fine, and, you know, from his research, so it's, that makes sense, but I mean, those are the kind of things that you even worry about when you deal with, with insurance. I mean, but be that as it may, Brian, go ahead.
So I just wanted to speak on, I'm part of the insurance committee. I had the luxury of being on that committee for the past little time. So I just kind of wanted to speak to what Mr. Buckles and what you're asking. So the basis of it, that I have gained from it, is either we have what we have that's in front of us, okay, or we, we sharpen our pencil or take away benefits, and what Ms. Crawford alluded to. So we can give things where you have a $3,000 deductible instead of the $1,000 deductible. You can have, you can do the copays. You're, you're going to adjust benefits, so what we have now in front of us is the best that United Health can, can give us. If we go further, it's going to take away something. So you're going to take away benefits. So it'll be a $3,000 deductible, or the copays will go the 45 to 70, or whatever that may be, out-of-pocket will be more, the max out-of-pocket, I think, is the same for all three. So basically, I think for us on the committee, if we're gonna go back and meet, it would be great to say, hey, we want to look at X, Y, and Z. And I know you're saying that United can give us something better, but I don't think they're going to personally, being on there, and I meet a lot with them. I try to go to all of them, but I think giving us some steering and, hey, we want to go to a $3,000 deductible, okay, we'll give them to give us that. I mean, I'm fine with that. I just, when you're taking, you're gonna take away benefits when you do that. So I think y'all have to decide if that's what you want to go, we can get those. I think they'll be willing to do that.
That wasn't my intent.
Okay, okay.
My intent was, whatever face or head nods I get here are irrelevant. I'd like to give them one more chance to see where they wind up.
Okay, and, and I, I don't mind.
Now, if the board does not want to do that, that's up to the majority of the board.
Okay. I'm good with whatever, I, I, you know.
But I'm glad for your further explanation of that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, David, with all due respect, I know you're a superintendent, and I know sharpen the pencil and negotiate, but it's a different world. Insurance is totally different. It real, truly, it's not the same as it was back then. This is a whole different ballgame, and we're dealing with 15, 1600 employees and a horrible track record.
Well, I, I just, I think it's, it's important enough that I would like to try. And that doesn't mean that I have turned and I've gone the opposite direction, but I just, if somebody wanted me to.
Turned. I'd like to try to donate more towards them, for the board to pay more towards it. That's what I.
Well, I think, I think we're all in agreement.
I think after we hear back, if the committee comes back and says, you know, there's nothing we can do, United said, you know, do whatever you want to do, then, then, I mean, then that's up to us. But I think it'd be premature to, I mean, we have a record of, our boards have a, have a record of trying to help in, in, you know, with contributions, and I'm, I feel pretty sure the superintendent, you know, probably feels the same way. You don't want to lose your employees, but we need to know we're getting the, the best we can get.
I think if nothing else, I mean, I would, I would like to have the madam chair, the attorney, come back and give us information, you know, at least schedule a special board meeting, if that's something the board wants to do, and at least vote on it, because we've got a little window of time.
Yeah.
And then I'm, I'm with Mr. Buckles. I don't see the harm in the committee coming back together and looking at all options.
I promise I'll be back from New York by next Tuesday.
Time is of the essence, but I'd like to make a motion that we give them a week to come back, and, and you'll set the time and.
And Charlie will report.
And Charlie will report, and we'll go from there.
So a week from, have a special meeting a week from today? Is that?
So when would the committee meet?
Friday.
Well, they, their earliest I can meet would be, would it be Friday? Is that 48 hours notice?
Next week is the 13th.
Friday.
Jane, when are you leaving?
I'm leaving Thursday.
And I'm leaving Thursday.
But I'll be back. I'll be back Sunday.
No, I mean, for the committee.
Oh, I, I wouldn't come to it anyway.
Well, see, they have a board member on, and I've only been to one meeting since the.
I'm glad they need me, but I think that's fine.
Because that was.
I don't mind.
Initially Nikki's responsibility, so I've only attended one, in all fairness.
I see what you're saying.
In all fairness to the committee, and I think a board member, it would be great if.
And it's his motion, I think, David.
I'm, I'm the one that's causing all this grief right now, sir.
Because if I was here, I would go.
I do not mind going to the insurance committee meeting.
Okay, so make your motion clearly, and let's get a second, and then we'll.
Well, can I, can I prefer, defer that to the board attorney to kind of word me a motion?
I think I hear you say that you're, you're making a motion to ask the insurance committee to reconvene Friday.
That's correct.
And for a special meeting to be called of the board Tuesday?
Yep.
Yes, as soon as can be reported back legally by public notice, and then we'll, we'll see.
So that, that would be the motion?
That would be the motion.
Insurance committee to reconvene Friday and for the board to call a special meeting on Tuesday.
All right, madam chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the insurance committee reconvene on Friday and that the superintendent call and advertise for a special meeting on Tuesday.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that's the school board meeting, be it 3:30?
Yeah, I can't be here if it's at 3:30. It would have to be at 9:00. I have some medical appointments that afternoon. It would have to be in the morning.
No, we're talking about the, the board meeting.
The 13th, you're talking about?
13th. So madam chair, whatever the pleasure of the board is, whatever y'all's time, meeting time.
Please, let's set it now.
I can be here at 9:00.
We would have.
We, we need to make a, we need to make it where Kathy can be, be a part of it.
10 o'clock. Kathy said she can be here at 10:00.
10 o'clock's fine with me.
I like 10:00.
10:00, okay, 10 o'clock.
I just thought I'd let you know that two of the four that are here are not gonna be able to make the Friday meeting. I don't know about the rest of the committee, but I guess we can convene as many as, as we have.
Whoever can be here.
And I would like to invite all the board members. I mean, as long as you're observing, you ought to.
They'll all be in New York.
Well, anybody that can come.
What time?
We'd love to have you.
What time and where?
I don't, I, I don't know. I guess y'all determine the day. I thought y'all might have determined the time, too. Okay, well, I will, we'll pick a time.
All right, the superintendent will, the superintendent will get in touch with-
Don't email him, because he doesn't get in there.
Read my email.
Will you call him, Paul?
I will.
Paul will call me.
And we need to set the time of the insurance committee, insurance committee meeting now. And I think this room is taken up until what time on Friday?
On Sunday, Friday, this room.
Okay, so they can-
What about the conference room?
Yeah, there's only going to be a half a hour.
It's not going to be that many people.
Upstairs, where we normally meet.
Upstairs conference room?
Yeah.
Okay. At what time?
Second meeting, lounge.
Okay, the lounge is bigger, so I'm trying to get a time on Friday. 3:30, 4 o'clock? What time do y'all normally meet? 3:30?
We're, we're, we're actually entertaining the idea of doing it, doing it during the school day itself. Most of the committee members aren't classroom teachers.
Okay.
So we may be able to pull it off, just so we don't ruin everyone's Friday night football plans and Saturday college football plans.
Crescent City is not time.
So what time, what time would be good for?
And we were kind of kidding about convening on Saturday, but our options are limited, being, you know, this late in the week and trying to do a quick turnaround. So we were thinking around 11 o'clock on Friday if there aren't any-
And if y'all can meet in the lounge?
Yes.
Does that make it any better for those of you who said you couldn't be here Friday?
As long as we're about 12:30.
As long as what?
About 12:00.
Y'all, y'all do it during the day if the superintendent will allow, though I'm sure he will.
So 11 o'clock, then?
11 o'clock in the upstairs lounge, okay, on Friday.
Upstairs lounge, that sounds interesting.
And then the meeting on Tuesday again, just so we-
Tuesday at 10 o'clock. Tuesday the 13th at 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along. It's time for our board reports. And I either start on my left or right. Kathy, do you have anything?
I really don't have a board report. I haven't done anything except the expulsion committee.
Okay.
And I would like to bring that up, because there's one more expulsion between now and when I leave office. And I'm thinking that whoever wins the election tonight may be willing to do what I've been doing. And if so, they could come with me to the November 15th expulsion.
Well, let me know, and I'll get in contact with them.
I thought David had brought it.
I did, I did, but that's, I would, I would love to see one of the new persons go-
If one of the, you know, I think whichever person wins my seat, I know them, and they may be willing to do it. I would be willing to speak with them. I wanted to mention, too, that as far as I know, the sunshine law applies once you're elected. So once you're elected, whoever's elected in my seat tonight can't be talking with y'all either.
Right.
And that's it, that's all I have to say.
Now, I don't, the, the other caveat to that would be that if, I don't know when your term expires totally.
On the 20th, when they're sworn in.
20th at 9:00.
Yeah, 9:00 on the 20th.
Because if you were to come to a closed hearing and, and where your term had expired, it would be a furp of-
No, 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 it's the 15th, and then both, in fact, both of us are in office.
I get, I get.
The one that's taking my place on me, so I think it'd be fine. Check, I'll check with the attorney.
All right.
David, you have a board report?
Hmm, well, ate lunch with grandchildren at James A. Long today, and enjoyed that very much. I enjoyed the football season, although we didn't, we didn't win them all and everybody, but some, some teams are, are doing quite well. Other than that, I'm, I think I've taken up enough time and created enough of a start today to give everybody something to chew on. You're good.
Can I, Ms. Gilliard?
Okay, again, I just want to, again, say kudos, thumbs up to Mr. David Powell for an excellent job. To the Police Athletic League, kudos to them and all they do in our community. They hosted, I, I would call it a pre-Halloween event for the students, children of Putnam County, there on the riverfront. They had Big Bird to visit and a few other characters there. It was awesome. They had various groups there with candies that were given out. My sorority was there as a part of it. That's one of our service projects. Just great. Last Friday, I got an opportunity to attend the breakfast for the teacher and employee, well, school support employee of the year breakfast hosted at, is it St. Monica's? Yes, they did an excellent job. Wasn't feeling well, but the food that I did taste was, was great, and their pastor was just, just great with his musical renditions and everything. And congratulations again to Brian Helm for being named principal of the year for our district. I think that's a great honor. I did go through all of the school improvement plans, because they have changed since the time that I was in, and we do have some schools that have made gains. I looked at the different things that were written. Middleton Bernie went from a D to a C. Crescent City, Palatka and Aquila maintained their C, that's great. Mosley went from an F to a D and was very close to, to getting that C, and it's great. CL Overturf, even though their population changes each year, they went from a D to a B, that is great. Interlock and High from a D to a C. Price from a D to a C. Melrose, something happened there and they dropped, but at least it was still a C. QI Roberts maintained their A. Long maintained their C. Jenkins went from a D to a C. Interlock and Elementary maintained their C. And I looked at the indicators that they had on, on the school improvement plan. Let me tell you, it's some great things happening in our district, even though we may fuss at times up here and seem as if we're not getting along. Even in our schools, our, our principals are doing what they need to do, and our teachers are certainly doing what they need to do. When you look at all the things that play into, to get in that grade, attendance, and, they talk about suspensions, one or more, they had to list all of these things that led up to that particular grade. They looked at student indicators, they had to list how many students fell into certain categories. Listen, it has changed, like David said, when he was the superintendent, it has changed since the time that I sat in the seat as a principal, but it's some great stuff. Then they had to describe how the school would ensure the socio-emotional needs of the students, not just the academics. They're looking at the whole child, and what areas of actions you're going to take, the rationale, your intended outcome, all of this. It is a lot on their plate, but they're doing a heck of a job, and, and I just want them to know that we do appreciate it, and wish that we could give it to you monetarily to show that we appreciate you. Final statement, have been sick now going on, almost looked like a month, but anyway, health issues, but I got a call yesterday from the accreditation committee person, and the thing that I remember, because I told him, I said, hey, I, I, you know, I'm not all here, I'm not hitting on all cylinders, but, he said, give me two words that would describe your district. And off the top of my head, I said, growing and glowing, because we honestly are, and we have the things in place that is going to get us to where we need to be. And the little bickering that we do, that happens in a family, but you still love each other, and you're still moving in the right direction. This insurance is a part of it, and we're not, you know, blaming the insurance company, but we're saying, help us to help those employees to be able to, to afford it and to meet their obligations. Again, thank you for all that you do to all of you, the district personnel and those in the school.
That was a wonderful report, Ms. Gilliard.
Wasn't that nice?
Mr. Buckles forgot that he did have something he'd like to mention.
I'd like to mention that we lost one of our career administrators over the weekend. We lost Bill Ivey.
No, that was in October.
Well, back, yes, it's been a, a time back, a little bit back. Bill Ivey passed away, and I, I found out over from his wife on Facebook recently, and I just wanted to let everybody know, he was a longtime guidance counselor, and, and he started at E S C as a teacher and wound up at E H Miller for quite a few years with his-
And Palatka High School.
And Palatka High School, and Brown and Pierce Elementary, and various other schools. So for those who did not know, I just wanted to let you know. Okay, that's, that's good.
I have, just have a couple of things. I was able to attend two of the three J F G ceremonies where they inducted their officers, that's jobs for Florida graduates. We have three dynamic teachers in those positions, and they are doing wonderful things with our kids that sometimes get missed, and they're going to make sure they're not missed, and they're going to graduate, and they're going to be prepared to either go to, to post-secondary education or be ready for a job. And I just would like to commend them and their principals for allowing them to be a part of that program. I was asked to meet with a group of people at Calvary Baptist Church last week, I think it was last week, week before last, with Floretta Robinson, who worked with Boys and Girls Clubs in St. John's County. And she has it on her heart to start a Boys and Girls Club in Putnam County. And she was meeting there, Linda Myers was there, and a couple of pastors and myself, and some people from the Housing Authority, and there were several people that were invited but weren't able to come. But she would like to make a presentation to the school board, and I've asked for some dates to get her on our agenda, because I really think we need to hear what she has to say, and, and to see if there's any way we can help her in that pursuit. We all know that Boys and Girls Clubs across the United States have helped many, many young people through the years. I, too, came to the advanced ed, the initial presentation yesterday that our superintendent made. He did a wonderful job. He kept me interested for 45 minutes, that's amazing. But I know that he could not have done that without the help of his leadership team, and Laura France, and Jonathan Hinkle, and, and, Hinky, excuse me. He's going to shoot me. And Thomas, and Tanya, and everybody else who was involved in that. He did a great job. And then I had a one-on-one interview with the chairman of the committee, one of the women from Michigan, and I spent about 20 minutes telling her how wonderful this district is, and how wonderful our leadership team is, and our principals, and what they are all working so hard in our schools to, to help us grow and make progress, which is what we were doing. I was also able to attend the teacher of the year, support person of the year breakfast, and we, we've got some wonderful teachers in our district and support personnel who help our schools run day in and day out. I also read the school improvement plans, and I just got to tell y'all, that's not easy reading. But again, it is, it is evidence of how hard our schools are working, and that their school improvement plans align with our district's vision and our goals to make Putnam County in the top 50% of, of school districts in the state. And I, I think some of you may have read this if you get the Palatka Daily News, but it just filled my heart when I read an article about Jonathan Garcia. I don't know if any of you remember Jonathan, but he, he graduated from Palatka High School. He was a state champion weightlifter, and he went off to college, and he still competes in, I think, some weightlifting events. But he had it on his heart, because he has two children, and he's taken them trick-or-treating, and he's taken them to festivals, and saw so many kids that didn't have a costume. So he has spent his resources and gathered other resources in the county to help collect costumes that, and I think he was at the riverfront, wasn't he?
Yes.
Handing out those costumes to kids that didn't have one and their parents couldn't afford them. So he is going to be collecting costumes. He probably goes around to Walmart and all those places when they've gone on sale, but you know, if you have any that are, you know, still good and still usable, he works at Badcocks, and he would love to have any help that he can get. And I think, I think that's it. Mr. Board Attorney?
So we have started researching in earnest the real estate issues that surround the James A. Long parking situation at Muslum, and hope to have more for the board very soon, but that's something that the superintendent is very focused on solving that issue, and we're-
It's a safety hazard.
Is that what it is, a safety issue?
Taking care of y'all.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have a few items, if you can bear with me, and these, these are kind of crucial. Mr. Buckles brought to our attention to ask that we research and form a committee to research naming of two school board facilities after two distinguished former employees and citizens in our district. And the Francis Ag Farm, we are considering, or the committee will consider naming that after the late John Eubanks, and the old Mosley campus in Palatka is being considered for the late Bill Thomas. And we were, we're actually in the middle, Mr. Boeing, I've tasked him with forming a committee to be, and we're following procedures, but a committee to study that, and there's a number of people that need to be on that committee to study that, and then bring a recommendation back to you. But just a little word about both of these gentlemen, they were both exemplify the characteristics we greatly admire and respect. They were both grounded in our community and have made a lasting impact on generations of Putnam County residents. So the committee will continue to meet, they're going to meet first on November 26, and then again on December 3. And we should be prepared after that time to bring you back a recommendation to our new board. A shout out for Andy Burnett and the Exceptional Ed Department. We just found out last week that our E S C, or Students with Disabilities graduation rate, has improved from 69% to 92%.
Wow.
Hats off to, hats off to our high schools and all the people that put work in there, but you know, these students are, I'm very proud of these students for overcoming any challenges they've had, and just going along with our overall graduation rate, and we should have those numbers probably in December, and we will not keep that a secret from you. We'll make sure we share that with you. We just found out we received a telemedicine grant. Now, I know you're thinking, why, why something about medicine? This is a, or telecommunications grant through USDA, which will allow us to add distance learning classrooms to our secondary schools to help with, address our teacher shortage in math and science. And so actually, teachers will be able to teach students in one of the part of the county to the other part of the county through telecommunications.
Wow.
So that's a, that's a $400,000 year grant, and greatly needed. So thank you, Dr. Coleman, she, she's the one who actually helped secure that grant. You talked about the advanced ed visit. Tomorrow, we'll conclude their visit, and they will actually be presenting their concluding remarks at 1:00 P. M. right here in this room. So any of you that would like to come out and, and hear their report, that would be great. I want to personally thank Laura France for the time that she's put in, and her staff. There's a lot of work that's going on prior to now, I mean, dating back last year, and it's all come to a point now, and the accreditation process is so important for our district. And so thank you, Laura, for all the time you put in, and, and I mean, she's gotten down to the details as far as what, what order them to eat for meals and picking them up, and, you know. So thanks, Laura, for doing that, and I'm sure we'll hear some good news tomorrow. You were given a calendar, a proposed calendar, that we will ask you to vote on at the November 20th meeting. We have included four nighttime meetings, all, all here in Palatka, and we spaced them out by quarters. So look at that, and if you have questions, feel free to ask us. But again, we want to give that to you to, to study that before the regular meeting on the 20th, that reorganization meeting where you'll be voting on the calendar. Speaking of school board matters, this Friday, the F S B A will have a legislative committee meeting, and I think Ms. Jorgensen and Ms. Cummings were members of that. So again, if you want to, that's November 16th, if you want to be at that meeting, will you be able to? It's going to be a, it's a call-in meeting, or is it? So we'll make sure you can do that?
Sure, I'm still in office.
Yes, ma'am. And lastly, just a reminder, after the new board members is sworn in, we are having a new member, new board member orientation, December 3, in the superintendent's conference room, or will be in here.
Did you print out those?
Okay, it'll be in here at 8:30 A. M. Yeah, we'll send, just want to bring that to your attention now. It was on November 26, but it's going to be on December 3.
So we're not going to do it at that particular meeting, the 10:30? Okay, the organization, reorganization meeting?
Right. So this will be a special training in this me, in this room, 8:30. Right, so this will be a special training in this me, in this room, 8:30, December third, and that will be after the conference in Tampa. So that'll be a chance to come back and ask questions. Madam Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.